Well, welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Weld County School District Six. Today is the 28th day of May 2020. This meeting will now come to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Green, will you give us a roll call, please?
Mr. Hayley?
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
Present.
Ms. Papas?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Mr. Tally?
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Well, if you're joining us, we are glad that you have joined us. I do want to let everyone know that we did meet just prior to this. It was to test our technology and to make sure that everything was working. No school business, school district business was conducted in that meeting. And this is a special meeting. We don't normally meet on Thursday nights. We have called a special meeting to address some budget cuts that we need to go ahead and make. This is the second round of cuts that we've had to make. And that is necessary because we expect that our budget will be cut around 7%. The legislature has let us know that they are cutting an additional $577 million from education this year because of the pandemic and because of economic downturn that it's created, that we will be missing $577 million from public education this next fiscal year. And so unfortunately, school districts around the country will be having meetings like this. But what's most unfortunate for Colorado is that our budgets have already been cut. We have been missing at least 7% of our budget for the last 10 years. I have a 10th grader, and he has never known a fully funded school district. So we will, the budget cuts that we'll be talking about tonight and the budget cuts that may come, most likely will come at our next meeting are in addition to the 7% that we were already missing from our budget. So we want to say thank you again to any voters and citizens watching from Greeley-Evans because the MLO that we passed in 2017 has been and continues to be a lifesaver in the midst of all of these budget cuts. It has allowed us to continue to educate students, but in this crisis has allowed us to get technology to students and to continue educating students, even while they've been at home. I don't know what we would have done without it. So we just want to take the opportunity to say thank you once again for passing that MLO in 2017 and to encourage our legislature to do something about where public education and the funding for public education stands. This is not exactly a problem with the legislature. This is a constitutional problem, not one that anybody ever anticipated, not one that anybody ever meant to create, but one that exists nonetheless and that continues to pull money away from schools each and every year. And so that's all I have for tonight. And I don't think that there are any people desiring to speak to us. So we don't normally do this, but we're going to take a moment for, well, we don't normally do this in our business meeting, but we normally do this in our work session. But we want to take a moment just to hear reports from the other members of the board and what they've seen and what they've been experiencing over the last couple of weeks since we met. And so I think we'll just go in alphabetical order tonight. And Mr. Hayley, will you start us, please?
I'll try to be quick. First thing I need to do is thank Dr. Pilch and her cabinet and all of the District Six staff for the way they responded to the pandemic and the positive things that they've done for our students and their families and our communities. Each one should be lauded for the things that they've done. And I know they're under incredible pressures, and I think that it's important that we recognize them for doing a good job consistently in our community. I've had countless people tell me how much they appreciate District Six and the great things that they've done. And I think that goes to Dr. Pilch and her cabinet and staff, but also to the school boards. So I'm very appreciative of all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayley. Ms. Mash?
I attended one graduation parade in my neighborhood, and my sincere congratulations go out to all of the graduates who worked so hard. And we look forward to celebrating with you later this summer, hopefully. It's still a lot of fun to see the signs around town and see that people are finding ways to celebrate with their family and friends. And yeah, I think that the online learning went well and giving the Chromebooks back was fun for my kids to get to see their teachers even from the car window. So I echo what Mr. Hayley said, that I've heard from teachers and parents alike and community members that your leadership has handled this as well as, you know, something so strange coming at us, acted swiftly and with great wisdom. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Ms. Mueller?
So I had the opportunity again to serve at a food distribution site at Northridge High School yesterday with the Weld Food Bank. I continue to be very impressed with our food services employees and staff. They're still consistently handing out food to families in the community, even though school is now over and there is still great need. And I do actually believe that will increase. The food bank's always needing volunteers and always needing donations. So I just can't advocate enough for supporting that and how I am so proud of the school district staff that continue to support that as well. I did want to say how impressed I was that I not only was seeing graduation signs for high school, but I saw some Chapllo signs as well. So some of those, what we may not think of graduations, but those moves up from eighth grade, you know, to ninth and from fifth grade to sixth, this is also being noted, and that was very nice to see in the community. So thank you to your whole staff for facilitating that as well.
Thanks, Ms. Mueller. Ms. Papas?
So I would just like to echo everything that's been said so far. I just really appreciate everything that people are doing for our community. I would want to say one thing that I know that we're going to need to make some difficult decisions about what the beginning of school looks like. And I have had parents talk to me about they just want their kids back in school or they're too afraid to send their kids back in school. And so I think that there's just so many mixed feelings out there about what parents want. And so I understand that we are facilitating input on that from parents and staff, and I appreciate that. I would also just like to remind our District Six staff that as we are easing up some of the guidelines, that I feel like the leaders in our staff in District Six, we really have to be very, very vigilant about modeling the appropriate social distancing and wearing masks. I feel like our kids, you know, we have kids that live in poverty. We have a community of color, and there are facts that show that our communities of color are being impacted more by this. So if we can model that, what we have control over, I just encourage everyone to do that as leaders in our community and as citizens and doing the right thing. So that is my wish, that is my hope. And I think that by us doing that and everyone doing that, I feel like we'll have an easier start to the year and perhaps we won't see the spike that we missed. So, thank you for that and thank you for everything, Dr. Pilch and your staff and teachers and kids and families.
Thank you, Ms. Papas. Ms. Solis?
I'd just like to echo what everybody else has said. I've gotten a lot of people saying just how great District Six has been and what a model we have actually been during this crisis. And I agree with Terry. I think we all need to be those examples. And I think it's really hard when I think about what we put our kids through, what we ask them to do, you know, when it comes to school shootings or even the stuff that's happening right now in communities with people of color. You know, we ask a lot of them, and a lot of times we as adults aren't the best examples. And I think we need to call upon ourselves as a school board and other adults that we know in our community to really ask them to rise to the occasion and to be that example for our kids because they really need it right now. I mean, there's things that kids have done differently, that we do differently because of situations that have happened, and we just ask them to just deal with it. And, you know, we as adults sometimes don't put that upon ourselves when situations happen. So thank you, Terry, for saying that. I want to thank again the District Six administration. You guys have been doing so amazing, and I know this stuff doesn't end at the end of the day. I know you take this home with you. The wheels are constantly turning. How do we do this better? Have we missed anything? How do we plan for the next thing? So just thank you for all the work that you do and the extra time that it takes because I know it's hard to let this go at the end of the day. So just thank you. And all the teachers have been so amazing during this challenging time. I mean, we've always known we have amazing teachers, but this is really shining the light on our district and the staff that we have in nutrition, our teachers, working with kids and just, you know, trying to get parents more involved. I'm sure this is like the most they've been involved and maybe not wanting to be this involved. But everyone has just really, really stepped up, and that's just been really impressive to me as a community member and a school board member and a mom. Congrats to everyone for working so hard and to all the graduates. This is a tough time for them too, but everyone has just been amazing. So thank you.
Mr. Tally?
First, I want to say thank you to the staff of District Six. And on the same breath, I want to say I'm sorry to the staff of District Six. I think that we're in a very difficult time. I know that we're in a very difficult time, and they are doing a phenomenal job of making the most out of what they're given. And then especially to our staff who might have been let go or maybe relocated, whatever the case may be. I have had a few colleagues who have unfortunately lost their jobs, and they have been so encouraging about what is to come and understanding about what has to happen for us to move forward and for us to give the most to our students. And so with that, I want to thank the administration, Dr. Pilch and your cabinet. You guys are doing a phenomenal job of creating a very thought out and thorough plan to make sure that everyone is truly given the most of what we possibly can give them, and that's including students. And so thank you. And like Terry said, it's a tough, tough time, but I truly know that we can be that driving force and that we could model what we want our students to do. I live by the, you know, don't expect what you don't inspect. And so we can start by first inspecting ourselves and making sure that we are following the guidelines and we are practicing whatever safety measures that need to be in place for us to get through this so we can get back to our quote unquote "normal" lives, whatever that may look like in the future. So with that, thank you to staff, thank you to the students, thank you to Dr. Pilch and your cabinet, and then thank you to the board for continuing to push through this. Just had a conversation with my mom who was very fascinated that we do not get paid in the school district. She receives pay, and she was like, "You do this for free? What is wrong with you guys?" And so it just goes to show that we truly have a heart and we care for our students and for our staff and for our district and just keep doing what you're doing and know that, you know, there's a group of us here who always have each other's back. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. And I'll just close with a couple personal notes that Ms. Mueller mentioned. From my experience watching teachers at Chapllo and Central and at West, and they've just done an incredible job of making students in transition, recognizing them, honoring them, celebrating them, and not just the teachers, but the retiring, or not just the students, but the retiring teachers. They've done an incredible job of making our kids feel honored and celebrated and just going above and beyond what's been called and asked of them to do. So kudos to our teachers and our students for making it to the end of this really trying last couple of months. So with that, now that we're done with all of our reports, Dr. Pilch, I think it's time for your report.
I thought I was going, sorry. Thank you, President Matthews. I have just a few updates. First, I'll give an update on our COVID response and our COVID emergency planning. We continue to meet as an emergency team multiple times a week. It seems as we get one plan in place and one problem solved, there's always a new problem to figure out what's coming next. So this week and over the next couple of weeks, we've been checking staff out and checking students out. We did have students return Chromebooks, as Ms. Mash mentioned. I have had the question asked about why have students bring those Chromebooks back when they're probably still going to need them in the fall? And so I want to explain that and share that with you all, that we're collecting Chromebooks back to inventory them, to clean them, to restore them, if there's work that needs to be done on them. And then our plan is to reissue well-restored and well-working Chromebooks to all of our students next fall. Maybe not the little tiny guys, but we do plan to have one-to-one Chromebooks for all of our students in the fall, knowing that there probably will be some time where we're in session learning and times when we're learning remotely or in-school learning and times when we're learning remotely. And those devices will be just as important as they've been these last couple of months. And I know that it was a hardship on many families using their own devices that perhaps they were using a parent's laptop. Well, the parent was also needing that laptop to try to work at home. So we know the importance of getting a device into every student's hand. We do still have some students coming in at Jefferson High School and at the Greeley Alternative Program with staff. They're coming in for in-person learning, very small groups, lots of precautions in place around physical distancing and wearing masks, but continuing to get some students across that graduation line here at our two alternative programs here at the high school level. And then we continue to plan as restrictions are lifted a bit. We are continuing to plan, and I too enjoyed the parade Saturday night for our graduates. And I want to give kudos to our parents and students who organized this event. The planning was exceptional. The students did exactly, well, mostly what they were told to do. I didn't see many of them wearing masks, even though they were asked to wear masks. But, you know, they did a great job in the parade, and we had hundreds of cars participate. Big shout out to the Greeley Police Department. We could not have done that evening without the support of the Greeley Police Department. So huge kudos to them. We're working on planning the graduations for the end of July, early August. I do need to share that it's likely an event that will be for graduates and minimal staff only, where we're still required to physical distance and very likely not have family members present. So if that's the case, we will livestream those graduations. But we'll wait to make that decision until we get a little further into June and see what the State Health Department Centers for Disease Control are recommending at that time around large gatherings. We do plan to do some in-person learning this summer at very few of our sites. We want to do some summer school programming for some transitions for students and for some jumpstart kind of work to get students ready for next year. So mid to late July, we'll plan to do some of that with precautions in place and bringing a few students back into school earlier than August. And then we're doing that extensive planning for August and getting ready for that. And as Ms. Papas mentioned, that we'll be gathering input. We, parents should expect to see a survey, I believe, tomorrow and staff as well, seeking input on the different models we are talking about that we may need to consider for the fall. I know all of us, our greatest hope would be that we could have all students and all staff back in school all the time and full-time. And unfortunately, the recommendations from the Centers for Disease Control and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and the Colorado Department of Education right now are not indicating that we would be able to have all students in the building all at the same time. And so we're looking at some different models that would allow us to continue educating students, hopefully some in the building and possibly some remotely still online. So we do want parents and staff to weigh in on that and help to give us guidance. I do, board, plan to bring the results of those surveys to you and some recommendations from our staff for your consideration at the June 8th board meeting so we can seek your guidance and advice as we plan for August. And then, you know, finally, President Matthews, you mentioned at the beginning, this was not a normally scheduled board meeting. I want to thank all of you for giving up this evening, being here tonight, coming in to the Zoom for the meeting so that we could take care of some very important business tonight related to our budget shortfalls, our staff cuts that we've had to make. And, you know, things are happening very quickly, not quickly enough at the legislative level. We'd really like the legislators to move a little more quickly and get us more information around where we really stand with our budget. But until we have that information, we're going to keep planning ahead and keep working to get the right pieces in place. And so we're working quickly as we get information, and that causes us to need to bring you together this evening. So thank you for being here, and thank you to staff for helping to prepare for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. And again, thank you to your staff for being here tonight, extra duty tonight. Our next item of business is to approve an agenda. And so if somebody would be so kind as to make a motion for that.
That the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Wait for a second for you guys to raise hands. Let's see, none. Ms. Green, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Papas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. The next item of business is to approve our consent agenda. And this is also an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts. Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Green, will you give us another roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Papas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. The next item that we have on our agenda is is the retirement incentive proposal. And this too is an action item. So if somebody would give us a motion and a second, we will proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District Six approves the retirement incentive proposal as presented.
Second.
Second.
Thank you all. Dr. Pilch, would you like to give us some more explanation about this retirement incentive proposal that you're bringing tonight? And I see Ms. Sponsler showing up as well. I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. So this is one of the reasons we felt we might need this meeting tonight. We reopened our contract negotiations with our Teachers Association, the Greeley Education Association, at the end of April, knowing that we were going to be facing some unprecedented and, you know, really terrible economic times here in the school district. And, you know, I've heard folks talk about the economic times we're facing, and people will talk about a decade ago and the recession at that time. And I'm here to tell you that what school districts are facing right now is far greater than what we were facing a decade ago. And we have a great team that we are working with. And you all have lauded my cabinet and the team who reports to me, but I also want to give recognition to our Greeley Education Association team. And, you know, they've come into several meetings with us here in Zoom, and we have really taken a look at the budget and look at what we anticipate likely to happen in terms of our state funding. And so one of the pieces that, as we opened that contract, that we all agreed we should take a look at is a retirement incentive. And, you know, we want to honor our longest-term employees, and, you know, they're some of our greatest assets here in the district. So this isn't about trying to push back or push out our long-term employees, not at all. This is really about knowing that in these unprecedented times with budget cuts and with the likelihood that teachers may not be able to come back to the classroom full-time in the fall or certainly have all of their students back full-time in the fall, we understand that we may have employees who, knowing what they know today compared to what they knew when they might have been making a retirement decision earlier this year, that with an incentive such as this, we may have some of our longer-term employees who are typically our most expensive employees, choose to go ahead and pursue retirement, in which case we do believe that we would realize savings. Depending on how many of our employees would take advantage of us, that would determine the savings. So with that, I want to pass it to our Chief Financial Officer, Megan Sponsler, to walk you through the bullet points of this, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. We actually met this afternoon with a team of GEA representatives and a small team of cabinet members, and we all agreed that this is something that we wanted to move forward with. What we have put together, just to provide some general parameters, this would be a one-time cash payment that would go to eligible employees. So employees would have to meet the retirement eligibility criteria under para. And then assuming they meet those parameters, then they would get a 10% payment, one-time cash payment. In exchange, they would go ahead and retire. Now, what typically happens is these are highly-paid employees, and then we would replace them typically with someone who is much newer in the profession, so their salary is not nearly as much. So in studying the data that we have from our employees, we've identified about 79 people who meet the criteria based on the data that we have in our records that would be eligible for retirement. And those 79, if all 79 of them were to retire and take this incentive, that would cost the district about $600,000, a little over $600,000. But the future savings is pretty significant. That savings could total up to $2.3 million. And that's a long-term savings because we're going to be recouping that year after year as people work their way through the salary schedule long-term. Just to give you a little more information on who might be eligible for this incentive, under para's rules, employees that are 65 or older, they can retire regardless of the years of service that they have in a para employment. Employees that are 65 or older, they can retire regardless of the years of service that they have in a para employment. employment. Employees that are 60 or older with 20 years or more of service are eligible. Employees that are 50 or older with 30 years of service are eligible. And then there's a reduced retirement benefit for people that are between 50 and 59. And then the years of service vary from 20 to 29 years. So that's kind of a general idea of who might be eligible. We don't expect all 79 people to say, yes, I want to do this. So we don't expect kind of a mass exodus because that was a concern of the team. We don't want to put ourselves in a position where we are suddenly needing to hire 79 new teachers because that would be a challenge in itself. So ideally, we would look for 20 to 30 people that might be interested in this. And I think that would generate quite a bit of savings for us long-term. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
This is just a detail about para. Is that, is that like a national thing for teachers if someone worked half their career in a different district or a different state? Have they been paying into para? That's just, I mean,
Yeah, that's a great question.
That's a question.
Yep, that's a great question. So para is specific to Colorado, but it's, any public employee is a member of para. So really, what could happen in this case is we might have a teacher that worked for 15 years in Pooter School District, and then they came to District 6. And so the data that I have would not necessarily reflect that. So we may have some people that are eligible and might be interested that we haven't specifically identified, but we would be happy to visit with them if this is something they're interested in.
Thank you, Mr. Hayfley.
Ms. Snyder and GEA and Ms. Sponsler and your team, I appreciate all of you working together as a team to come up with a really plausible solution to a challenging issue. My question is, does this only impact classroom educators or can administration take this same buyout and go down the road?
So at this point, we are only offering this to people on the certified salary schedule, the master contract. We did have a brief conversation about, could this apply to other people in the district? And what we really landed on is that we wouldn't necessarily see a big savings because other employee groups don't have the same kind of salary structure. So it would be a little more difficult to say that we could actually save money by offering this to other employee groups.
Thank you.
Ms. Papas?
Well, that was one of my questions as well. My other question is, Ms. Sponsler, you might have already answered this, but you said this would cost $600,000. Can you talk about where that money would come from and what the plan is for that?
Absolutely. And that's a great question. Right now, we would plan to take this out of fund balance or carryover. It's kind of, it truly is a one-time cost. And so this is the kind of expense that makes sense to pay for with the fund balance and the carryover that we have.
So Ms. Sponsler, I want to just be certain on this question, that we would pay ourselves back though in this next budget year. It isn't just a one-time, we're not just paying people out now and then a year before we would actually see savings. We're going to see savings this school year, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
So worst-case scenario, we break even this year, but over years, we will continue to have a savings because we're no longer paying those higher-end employees.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Tally?
Oh, were, was there a survey sent out? Or do you, how many employees do you anticipate will take advantage of this opportunity? And is it, is it worth it, I guess, is my question?
Well, we really don't know how many people will be interested. We did not do a survey. We just didn't really have time to do that. But we, just anecdotally, from conversations from teachers around the district, feel like there might be some people that are interested, I think, especially given the situation that they might come into in the fall. Not being a traditional teaching position, it might be just an incentive worth taking that would help them make that next step in their career. So we do feel like this is probably worth it. We think that it will save the district money long-term. And the committee felt pretty strongly that we would see enough people take advantage of this to make it worth it.
You know, I feel pretty confident that our Teachers' Association does an excellent job speaking on behalf of our employees. And I think they felt pretty strongly that, you know, 5% is probably too low, that some districts offer 5% incentive, thought that was probably too low, and that maybe 10% would be enough to honor and incent some of our employees who are close to retirement. I mean, you know, this, this has been a tough spring, guys. And, you know, I think a lot of people did not intend to do education in the way that teachers are being asked to do education right now. And so we do think that's a game changer around people possibly considering retirement now, who maybe in January, they weren't thinking about retirement. But after the experiences they've had for the last couple of months, that they might, it might be appealing at this point.
Ms. Solis?
So I know that you said that this would mainly affect teachers in this early retirement thing. Can you remind me what we've kind of already done with like administrative-level positions?
Are you talking about cuts, Rhonda?
Yes.
Cost savings?
Yes.
Well, to date, we have eliminated 12 district-level positions. So, you know, those range from director level to managers to coordinators to executive assistants. And then our district leadership team will not take what is comparable to the step that we're still proposing for teachers. There will be, you know, our district leadership team will not receive that. So we did, we are seeing some savings there as well. We, as Megan said, I don't, you know, we, we don't, we don't have a $50,000 discrepancy or $40,000 discrepancy between a starting administrator pay and an ending administrator pay. So if we were to offer this to, say, to, you know, our administrators, we wouldn't see those kinds of savings with their replacement, most likely. And as Andy Lee pointed out to me today, you know, I have the authority to incent administrative and professional technical with something like this at, you know, at any time. It doesn't require agreement with the Teachers' Association anyway. I would, of course, want your all's agreement, but, you know, we don't, the teachers only negotiate on behalf of the teachers.
I just want to make sure that we're having the discussion out loud so that people understand that we're not just looking at teachers. We're looking at the whole, you know, district. And that I know that there's been some community members concerned with, you know, administrative positions. And so the fact that we've had to make these tough decisions in the administrative, you know, department, I think it's important that we remind community members that it's in every level and we're looking at every, under every rock to figure out how to make savings. And that, you know, it's unfortunate and we wish we didn't have to do any of this. But we value all of our employees, but we're making this across the board and not just with teachers.
And I will, you know, I will have for you some bullet points, talking points, certainly by the end of next week, that you all can utilize as you're having those conversations. I also plan to do a budget town hall through a Zoom, something like this, where people can log in and we can talk about, you know, what the status is of the state funding and what that means for our budget and what those cuts are that we have put in place. Once we have all of that done, we'll do that budget town hall and share that, you know, as publicly as people are willing to log in.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Well, I would just say then, thank you to Dr. Pilch. Thank you to Ms. Sponsler. Thank you for, again, turning over every rock, being creative in finding ways to save us, save us money. So, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Papas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item and final item tonight is a budget update. And so I will give this back over to Dr. Pilch to update us on budget tonight.
Thank you. And we had hoped that by tonight, we would have more information for you, hoping that the legislators would have made it more of a decision by now than what they have around the School Finance Act. Nonetheless, we do have more information today than we did at our last school board meeting. And Ms. Sponsler and I will share as much as we can with you tonight and answer any questions that you have that we can answer. Again, I will, I'll just say, once we have more information, we do plan to do a budget town hall where we'll lay it all out for our community and give folks an opportunity to ask questions and ask for clarity around the decisions we've made and the recommendations we're making. We do hope that we will be able to bring you more final information by that June 8th school board meeting, which may require us to do some smaller meetings prior to that to really walk through the fine points. So we're not, you know, doing that in, you know, in this setting in such a large group. So we may bring you in, you know, one or two at a time to walk through really the real deep detail work that we, that I doubt that most of the public is interested in. So we have identified around 14 million-plus of cuts that we believe we can implement that will likely be a part of our budget proposal that we bring to you in June. We understand that may not be deep enough. And so then we have another set of cuts that we've identified if we need to go deeper than that 14, 15 million to our budget. So we're prepared to make recommendations to you as Ms. Solis's question around where are the cuts. I will tell you, we've made cuts in every single department. Every single department at the district level has lost a person or people out of their department because the money is in people. My cabinet and I will defer our salary increases. Our district leadership team will not take a step increase, which we've already informed them of. We, at this point, we're not, we've not yet looked at furlough date, we have looked at furlough days. We know what we, what we recover with furlough days. We're just so, we want to stay away from furlough days for as long as we can because we know we need our children and our teachers in the classroom every possible minute we can get them back in the classroom next fall. And so furlough days will probably be the next place we would have to look, but we do see it as a last resort. Before I have Megan give you kind of an overview of where we are right now, I want to share that we're still waiting on guidelines around the CARES Act dollars or the COVID relief fund dollars that have come our way from the governor's office, from the federal government to the governor's office to public education. So we do, we have some guidelines around that that I shared with you all in our bulletin last week. But those dollars will certainly benefit us in the short term. They're one-time dollars. They're not intended to be used for budget cuts. But as you all know, we have incurred significant additional expenses with the move to remote learning. We've purchased additional devices, hotspots. We're paying for internet for some families. We've had to purchase additional curriculum. We're losing $20,000 a day every day we feed families in our community. And so it's, you know, there are some significant additional expenses, including protective equipment, thermometers. We know we're probably going to have to run two health clinics in every school when we come back to school in the fall so that children who are receiving medication and first aid are not in the same health room where children who might be COVID-positive are, needs are being met. So we know there's significant expense coming. And those CARES Act dollars, those COVID relief fund dollars will certainly be, you know, well utilized and are, you know, we are so grateful to have them. Because to have a budget crisis and a health emergency crisis at the same time, I think, I think many of us were thinking, how do we even, how do we even do this? Like, how do you even continue to have public education with both of these things going on that are hitting us financially and, you know, head-on? And so those relief dollars are going to be a huge asset for us. So with that, Ms. Sponsler, I'm going to ask you to take it away and just share where we are. And then I know we'll take questions.
All right. So as Dr. Pilch said, we had hoped that we wouldn't have more information to share tonight, but we really don't. I did listen in to the Joint Budget Committee last week. And as riveting as it was, they take a lot of breaks. So it was interesting to listen to all that. But really, the bottom line is, the Joint Budget Committee doesn't actually write the School Finance Act. They identify how much money there is to go into the School Finance Act, but they don't actually put that bill together. So we are waiting for the School Finance Act to be introduced. I have heard rumors that there are drafts circulating. I have not seen one myself. But the draft of that School Finance Act will tell us a lot. As Mr. Matthews said, the Joint Budget Committee identified that school finance needs to absorb 577 million in additional cuts. So that could take the form of several different options in the School Finance Act. Probably the most obvious and straightforward would be to increase that negative factor or the budget stabilization factor. But there have been concerns that that would disproportionately impact our small rural districts. So there's been some conversation and discussion around trying to change some of the factors within the School Finance Act so that they could kind of protect the small rural districts a little bit. That, of course, then means that the money has to come from somewhere to pay for that. So once we see that School Finance Act and see how that's drafted, we'll know more about what the impact is to District 6. With that said, if you make the assumption that that $577 million goes to the budget stabilization factor, that increases our budget stabilization factor to $1 billion statewide. So it almost doubles that. That's a huge number. And the number that the Joint Budget Committee was very reluctant to hit, they were really trying hard, I believe, not to do that to K-12 schools. But there, you know, there's limited options. They've cut where they could, and K-12 was kind of the last thing they did. If that increase to the budget stabilization factor happens, then I believe that we'll be looking at about a 7% reduction to our District 6 budget. And that's the equivalent of about $17.7 million. So as Dr. Pilch said, we've already identified about $14.5 million. So we're getting close. We're not quite there. So we have some more work to do. But these CARES Act dollars, the CRS, as it's being referred to, those dollars will definitely help. And we are thinking as creatively as possible to utilize those dollars to our advantage to help us get through this budget crisis. So that's kind of where we are in a nutshell. And Dr. Pilch, did you want to add something?
So I'll just add that there is some conversation around, among superintendents and CFOs around, what are the things we spent money on this spring, for example, with paying staff because of COVID that we could pay ourselves back for, which would then free up money for us to carry over for next year? One of the things we're still waiting to hear on is if we were to take furlough days in the fall, would, would we be able to say, we identified these X number of furlough would, would we be able to say, we identified these X number of furlough days. However, we need to be in session, because our children have already missed out on much in-person learning this spring. So we're going to reinstate those furlough days and pay for those furlough days with CARES Act dollars. So, you know, we're waiting to get the rules around the spending of this money. What we know is we do have to have it spent by December of, this December of 2020. So we can't count on using those dollars in the second semester, for example.
Are there any questions for Dr. Pilch or Ms. Sponsler? Anybody? Ms. Sponsler, I have one. Just, you mentioned the factors, and they could change the factors. One of the factors that was suggested that they address possibly would be the cost-of-living adjustment. If they did address that, if they took a portion away from the cost-of-living adjustment, how would, how would that impact us? Would that be beneficial to us?
That's a really good question. And I would have to run the numbers, but I do believe that that would be beneficial to us. That cost-of-living factor really favors large metro area districts and districts in the mountain towns that have a lot of resources. Your Aspen, Vail, Steamboat, those kinds of districts. So my guess, without running the numbers specifically, I think that we would benefit if those factors were shifted. It really would depend on how much they decide to pull out of that factor. That is the largest factor within the School Finance Act and the most costly.
Thank you, Ms. Sponsler. Are there any other questions from, from school board members? All right. I don't see any. So I will just say thank you to Dr. Pilch and to you, Ms. Sponsler, again, for, for all the creativity and all the ways that you're looking to save money. And we greatly appreciate all of your work. I know, I know it's a lot right now for you and your team, especially Ms. Sponsler. Dr. Pilch, did you have anything else?
Thank you, President Matthews. You know, everyone will tell us, and we will say it, and we believe it, that we need to keep cuts as far away from the classroom as we can. And the reality is, we have 1,700 teachers or something in the system. And so you, you cannot make up these kinds of losses without having some impact on our people. And, you know, we, we have, we have far fewer teachers in the system already over what we had at the start of this school year because of a need to find these cost savings. So, you know, it, it's fewer than 50 teachers, but, but those folks are folks, as Mr. Tally mentioned, and other folks whose positions we have cut are people who are, you know, now out of work and looking at, maybe their job has been repositioned in the district in some cases. But many people, their plans have changed. And so we're looking to do everything we can. One of the pieces that you approved tonight on the consent agenda around personnel had to do with Platte Valley Youth Detention Center. And as you all know, we're changing that contract with the state, with the Division of Youth Services, which will be a significant savings to District Six. But those were teachers who we employed, who, who had to be told last week that, you know, they no longer had a job, because we're not providing those services to the state any longer. So, you know, we don't, and I know you don't. We don't take this lightly. And our association members, who we're working so closely with as we reopen the negotiations, do not take this lightly. I want to shout out to them and their commitment to working alongside us and with us and to have these hard discussions. It's really a, an honor to be able to work collaboratively and use even, use the consensus process, even through Zoom, to solve some of these problems. And, you know, Andy Lee came on as she will begin to serve as president of the association, and Aaron Snyder will transition back to the classroom. And she's, Andy's proven herself to be a team player and bought into the consensus process. And, you know, we're, we're going to get through this. And a shout-out to Kelly Longanker on this retirement incentive. He and Megan worked side-by-side on that. And, you know, and Dawn has helped us. You all worked with Dawn through negotiations last year. And, you know, we, we all get it. We all get how tough this is. And, and we're, we're going to get through this. We're going to figure this out together. I do want to say, I think we'll have probably fewer students in classrooms in the fall. So I think that bite of having a bit fewer teachers in our buildings, it's, you know, one to two teachers, depending on the size of the building. But I think that, that hardship will be lessened a bit in the fall, because I, we do know we still have families who are going to choose to have their children home and learning online, which we will offer an option for that to occur. Ms. Sponsler, anything else we didn't get to say that you want to add?
I don't think so. I just echo yours, thanks to the GEA and that team. It's, it's been a pleasure to work with them.
Wes just sent me a note as a reminder that, you know, we did cut all but one of our dean of student positions. So that was four dean positions, I think. And, and we cut some of our assistant principal positions. So that work is going to look different for administrators next year, because there's going to be fewer of them at some of our buildings to do the work that, and the work doesn't go away. So we're going to have to find new ways to do that work.
Any other questions from, from board members on this? Yeah, I would just echo that this is not, not easy work. It's not easy to let people go. And, and they're, they're, and I only know a few of them. I don't, I don't know all the people. But I've seen a few that's like, wow, these are, these are really valuable people to our system. And it will be harder to get the work done. These were not, not people that, that were just sitting around, not do it, not doing anything. It'll be harder without those deans of students. And some of your upper-level administration, Dr. Pilch, I know. It's hard to let some of those people go as well. But again, we thank you and the finance team, all of you, for, for just continuing to be creative in how to, how to save this money and how to, how to get us through this budget crunch. So. Oh, I'm sorry, somebody did raise their hand. Ms. Mueller.
So I just wanted to clarify or have Megan, you clarify for us. I've had a few parents ask the question about, does that mean that construction on our school buildings under the bond issue is going to stop? Or that's going to be impacted? And I just was hoping you could clarify that for any parents that are wondering.
No, Ms. Mueller, thank you. Our bond is absolutely going forward. Actually, they've gotten into building sooner, because we're not in them in some cases. So they're in there. Megan, want to talk a little bit about how the funding works and why it continues?
Sure.
And other stuff can't?
Yep. So that funding was voted on and approved by our voters. And so that money is totally separate from any other funding source. And that money was identified for specific purposes. And that is exactly how we will use that money. So the building will continue. And it is starting actually earlier, as Dr. Pilch said. We continue to have regular planning meetings to keep those projects moving forward. But it, it does, I can absolutely understand why people are confused and concerned. Why are we making cuts over here, but we're still building buildings? Well, we have money that was designated specifically to build buildings. And so that's how we need to use that and stay true to our voters.
Mill levy override is, is very much the same. And so there will be some purchasing that continues and some positions that continue, because they were promised in the mill levy override. And, and people, so we've got to get really clear in an FAQ around what's mill levy override, what's bond dollars, and what's general funds? So people aren't, you know, we were asked today about new vehicles that we bought this year for some of our support staff area, replacing vehicles that were 30, 40 years old. And that, you know, that was part of the mill levy override. So, but, you know, people see that and wonder, well, why did you buy new vehicles for your ground drivers to drive when, when you're facing a budget shortfall?
Any other questions? Well, if there aren't, this is our last agenda item. And so we will see you all back here and on June 8th for our next, next board meeting. And to say that this meeting is now adjourned.